And Chair Terekenamans is here as well. For the town, we have Paul Creedon, a building inspector, and Kim Johnson from the planning department as well. First item on the agenda, seven o'clock, fourteen minutes late, Catherine Hines for a special permit on the zoning bylaw, section seven one five and eleven six, to construct a second story addition over the existing garage, which would extend the legal nonconforming four point four feet side yard setback at eighty six Fairhaven Road. Anybody here to speak for the applicant? Elise, go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. My name is Elise Stone and I'm the architect on the project. So eighty six Fairhaven is a single story, two story. Do you should I give my address? Sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so it's a two story residential home. It has an attached single car garage. It is, the lot is nonconforming in both area and frontage. So this is residence B. The minimum lot square footage in residence B is twenty thousand. This lot has sixteen thousand eight hundred fifty eight. The minimum frontage is one twenty five and this has ninety. So what they want, the owners wanted four bedrooms on the second floor. And so the only place really that worked, because they didn't want any new space on the first floor. So the proposal is to add a room over the single car garage. And so there will be no additions to the apartment at all. Excuse me. Oh, sorry. So right now, the house is nonconforming only on that right setback. And it's the back corner of the garage, which is four point four feet from that lot line. So this, we're putting the addition on, setting it back a little with, on that back corner. So I mean, we're at four point seven. So slightly improved, but not greatly improved. But so, but we still haven't made the nonconformity worse. The existing square footage of the house is twenty four hundred and two square feet. The addition is three hundred and sixty three square feet. So the total is twenty four ninety. No, I'm sorry. The garage is two hundred, that's the addition is two, three hundred and sixty three square feet. That, yeah, and that's the garage and then the addition. So this is, you know, even with the twenty four ninety two, it's way under the required FAR, which is fifty two forty six. So, so anyway, that's, we're just asking for relief on that second story.
Good, thank you. Ravi, Tom, any questions for the applicant?
Yes. On the chart that was included with the application, it looks like the garage was two hundred and seventy three square feet. And if I read that chart correctly, is the second story over the garage three hundred and sixty three square feet?
No.
Or I missed reading the chart?
Yes, it's three sixty three because it's a little bit more over the breezeway. Okay, so it also, so it's also over, when you look at the garage, there's a little bit to the left. There's a door, like if you look at the photo,
Yes.
there's a door that you go in. So that's not included is the garage square footage. That is, you kind of walk in and that's part of the house. So it's going over that, that's why it's larger, yeah.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Ravi?
No questions.
Thank you. No question for me either. So let's open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public wanting to speak on this application? Hearing none, seeing none. I close the public comment section of the hearing and take this back to the board. I I don't have an issue with this. Did you, by the way, Elise, did you talk to any of the neighbors? If anybody talked to any of the neighbors? I mean, I'm sure they got the notices, but.
Yeah, they got the notices. I did, the owners, I think, did talk to the immediate neighbors. And, you know, there was no, no comments. And I called the office and there were no letters that had been written.
Right, right, there's no letters here. So, but I don't see. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's nonconformity is not being made worse. It's over an existing garage, no additional footprint, so. Ravi, Tom?
Yeah, I'm on the same page with you. I'm good with this.
Cool. Tom, if you are as well, then I would entertain a motion.
Did Ravi, because I'm, it got lost a little bit. Did Ravi move?
No.
I know, I moved now. I make a motion that Catherine Hines, the application of Catherine Hines for a special permit under zoning bylaw, section seven one five and eleven six, to construct a second story addition over the existing garage, which would extend the legal nonconforming four point four foot side yard setback at eighty six Fairhaven Road, be approved with standard conditions. Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Mr. Swaim?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mm hmm. Second item on the agenda, David Daniel Caminaster for a special permit on the zoning bylaw, sections five, three, six, two, and eleven six, for special home occupation at forty four Derby Street. Anybody to speak here for the application?
Thomas Fell, well, I represent Dr. Caminaster. With respect to this matter, he's on the call, as you can see. Available to answer any questions you may have that I don't have the answers to. The doctor's a board certified psychiatrist who's practice includes concentration in the area of child and adolescent psychiatry. Attached to the application is some background information with respect to the doctor's, doctor's background and so forth. He currently has an office at seven forty seven Main Street, where he's been practicing in that location and has been practicing in Concord since two thousand and six and has been a resident of Concord as well for an extended period. In two thousand twenty three, as indicated in the project narrative, he bought the property at forty four Derby Street, principally, of course, as to be his principal residence, with the view towards hopefully being able to get this special home occupation, special permit in order to see his patients at the location. We've attached a plot plan that shows the required parking and an updated floor plan that shows some interior modifications that we made to the house to, to create the private space for consultations in his office. Also, you've got photographs of the exterior. And there is also a small sign, which is his logo, which he proposes to use, conforming with the design, but signed by law requirements in terms of size. And that's basically, he would be residing there, as I said, and see his patients. He sees patients generally in the morning. He currently sees a couple of patients. And then otherwise, his hours, office hours usually start, as indicated, about twelve thirty in the afternoon and usually end about eight thirty, those Monday to Friday. Occasionally, he sees a patient, our patients on Saturday. On the average, he may see seven or eight patients a day, but there will be only one patient at a time at the location. So there'll be no traffic issue with respect to that. They can use the parking that's shown on the plan. He satisfies all the conditions. He has no employee. It's just him. He has the sign that we talked about. He has got the parking requirements. And, and as the photograph shows, this property is heavily landscaped, so including a landscape buffer, the adjacent driveway. I also filed yesterday a summary of the requirements under section eleven point six generally and responses to how he meets those criteria. So we're available for any questions you may have of me or Dr. Caminaster, but that's the proposal before us and we hope you grant the permit accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Fell. It was a very, very complete application. Thank you for your memo yesterday that, you know, was spelled it out for us a bit further. So thank you for that. Any, Ravi or Tom, any questions?
I did not have any.
I had, I just, I had trouble seeing if there's any detail around size, location of the sign, you know, I know it's going to conform with the bylaw, but the, the section we're approving under also says it'll be signage as approved by the board. So I don't know if you have a sense of how big and where the sign is going to be.
There's a, there's a photograph of the logo. It'll be just on, on the, on the front of the house where the entrance is, but it will otherwise conform to the requirements assigned by law.
But is, but is it, is it a free standing sign or is it on the house? Is it, is it?
On the house.
It'll be just a logo on the house?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll, I'll open it up for members of the public. If there's any questions, comments from the public. Mr. Simmons, please go ahead. Oh, Miss Simmons, sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Hi, Johnson, seventeen Central Street. Our backyard abuts this property. We have no issue with the Dr. Caminaster seeing patients. I, there was a note on the floor plan about the yard. It said yard may be used. As you, as you know, in West Concord, we live in pretty tight circumstances. Here, our patio is probably, you know, thirty feet from the patio that he would use personally, perhaps to see patient, patients. So, you know, we're out there together, maybe sitting, and we kind of hear each other sometimes and that's fine. That's part of the beauty of West Concord. But I do have strong concerns about Dr. Caminaster seeing patients outside the home in the yard, which just could, you know, I think that those are very personal conversations. They, I'm sure they get emotional sometimes and that's all good. That's the business Dr. Caminaster is in. But I would request that the, if possible, that it be limited to the sessions and his business be limited to inside the house as opposed to outside. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for that comment. Good, good comment. Let's, let's address that. Ms. Mr. Caminaster, can you address that? Talk about that maybe in terms of HIPAA as well?
Oh, certainly a reasonable concern. You know, I, most of the time there, it's pretty quiet. And I sort of, just sort of would like throw a football around, that kind of thing. But I certainly would not want conversations to bleed over and I certainly would not want to disturb anybody. So if, if I heard from somebody that I was doing that, I would be very okay with ceasing and desisting.
Thank you. And also just, just to note that if, if we were to issue this permit, it would be a permit for a year. We, that's our typical course of action, sort of like it's a trial period. And then if everything goes okay, you know, next year, we would, would do a three year permit. That's what we would typically do.
It's my understanding from, from talking to the doctor about that, that any activity that takes place outside is sort of playing with the children, as they say, tossing a football around. I don't think, it's my understanding, there are no actual sessions in terms of discussions of circumstances or otherwise inside the house. So it was just on the occasion that he goes out to, these are young children a lot of instances and it's just a pretend space for that, but we're fine with that.
Okay, cool. Friendly neighbor, Ms. Simmons?
Yes, thank you. Hi there, thanks for this opportunity. It's nice to virtually meet my new neighbor. Similar to John's theme with the tight quarters over here at Derby, we live at seventeen Central, again, right behind this property. I have some concern about air quality with respect to seven to eight cars coming in and out of the driveway each day. These are children, so they don't drive. So it wouldn't be about driving your car into the driveway, turning, you know, parking, turning it off. It, there could be conceivably a patient's parent who is cold and chooses to sit in an idling car in the winter or a parent who drops their child off and then returns. That's two trips. So now we're talking about, you know, potentially fourteen to sixteen, sixteen trips in and out of the driveway each day. So I am, I don't have an issue with the concept of Dr. Caminaster, you know, hosting his practice in his house, but I am not comfortable with potential degradation to the air that's abuts my property.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that comment. Ms. Creedon, is there a idling bylaw in the town of Concord? I'm not sure there is.
I'm not sure, Theo, but yeah, that would be enforced by the police. And not, not the zoning, so I'm, I'm not sure.
All right, so.
I'm fairly certain we wanted to include a condition that, that said that the cars would not be idling in the driveway. We would be fine with that.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that would be, that would be a good, a good thing to condition that. And, and yeah, I mean, and unfortunately, they are kids. So somebody will drop them off and pick them off and they might wait or they might just.
In the vast majority of patients that I see, the parents wait in the waiting room and I do have a waiting area for, for the house. So if the request was that people not be coming and going, I certainly understand that and I would certainly grant that.
Yep, and, and no idling in the driveway.
Correct.
But that's good, yeah, I saw the, I saw the waiting area on the plan, so.
I don't know anyone who's.
I would think one of the, one of the conditions, I think, if we're going to go that route, and I think we should, then one of the conditions that seems to should be that the party bringing the patient must spend the time in the waiting room of the house and not in the car. Because to enforce a no idling policy would be very difficult.
Yep. Agreed, agreed, agreed.
It's fine.
Good, good. Good, thank you.
And just a question, and another question. Would there ever be more than one child ever in the backyard?
No, just one. They might be in the waiting area, but only, only one at a time would be in the backyard.
Good. Ms. Simmons again.
To the Simmons, because I'm a little, I'm a little conflicted here because I live right across the street from the Simmons. So I, and I know the property the doctor's in. Is there any further protection or concerns based on this discussion? Or are the Simons okay with this?
You can't see that, but Ms. Simmons has her hand up again. So go ahead, Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, sorry. The question that Tom Swaim just posed.
Yeah.
Are you asking whether, what's been discussed, we're now comfortable with?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that's what Tom's asking.
Well, unfortunately, John had to run out. Is there an opportunity for us to consider it a little bit and, and talk it over? Or, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, generally, I feel comfortable. But again, he and I haven't had a chance to talk. But I don't know how this process works. This is a first for me.
Yeah. So we typically would, would grant, and I think Tom made a comment to this. We would grant the permit and since it's, it's for a year, you know, that's why we only grant the permit for a year so that we have a really, have a test run and then, and then can adjust it as necessary. Jonathan, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Simmons.
I, I interrupted you. I did have, actually, I raised my hand because I have, I do have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
The other, my question for Dr. Caminaster is, how does, how would the, one session ends, another session arrives situation work out, given that it's a, you know, just a narrow, long and narrow driveway? And again, I'm getting back to the, the cars idling topic. Like, is it at all possible that the next patient's parent is in the street in a running car, waiting for the previous patient to pull out of the driveway?
I, I thought about that. That's not a problem here at the professional center, certainly, because there's a parking lot that's the size of Texas. But what I was planning on doing was making sure that I slightly stagger my patients a little bit so that there's plenty of time for the first to leave before the second arrives.
Okay, can, can you give me a sense of this, like, how much time we're talking about between sessions?
Ten minutes.
Okay. That's fair.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for, Mr. Silverstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jonathan Silverstein, I have nothing to do with this application, but I just figured since I'm here, to the extent it's helpful, Massachusetts has a statute that prohibits idling of any vehicle for more than five minutes. It's section sixteen A of chapter ninety. So to the extent that's helpful to the board's consideration, I thought it, throw it out there.
Thank you so much. So that's, that's it. But as, as Tom said, you know, the statute is there, but the enforcement is, is another matter, of course. Because after five minutes, you have to call the police. And that's, that's, that's not, one more, Ms. Simmons, and then we'll move on.
Yes, sorry, I wanted to tell you that I, I feel comfortable making an executive decision, you know, on behalf of my husband and me.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
So let's now close the public comment section of this, this hearing. And Tom alluded to it already and I think I'm, feel pretty comfortable with it, with, you know, we have standard conditions. It's a permit for a year. We're going to add a couple of other conditions, staggering of patients, no sessions in the backyard. And maybe, maybe some others, but. Ravi, you wanna? Either move or have more input?
Yeah, I can make a motion and I'll sort of take a crack at the conditions. So I make a motion that we approve the application of Dr. Caminaster for a special permit under zoning bylaw, section five, three, six, two, and eleven six, for a special home occupation at forty four Darby Street, based on the narrative submitted as part of the application, which includes that no more than one vehicle will be there, other than is, of course, no more than one patient vehicle will be there at a time. And that would be achieved by staggering appointment times that patients or their parents would not be permitted to idle their cars in the driveway. And that the activities in the backyard not include conversations that constitute sort of therapy sessions and otherwise on standard conditions for a period of one year.
Thank you, Ravi. Tom?
Yep.
I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Fia? Mr. Swaim?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. So permit granted. Thank you so much and we'll see you in a year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, seven, the seven fifteen item, Irina Maldanova for a special permit on the section, special permit on the zoning bylaw, sections four, two, 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 and eleven six for nine hundred and ninety nine square foot detached additional dwelling at two sixty two Virginia Road. Little bit of an, of an update where we, sort of where we are. I think last meeting that we had, I think we were ready to close the, close the public hearing. We kept it open since we got a last minute letter in from an attorney and we afforded the, the applicant the courtesy to, to accept, for us to accept that letter and to review it. We since then had our town council review that letter. And I think, you know, I agreed with him at what the response when it came back, that there really wasn't anything new in that letter. So we're planning to move on from there and then applicant retained another attorney, not a council, who also then gave, gave us a memo that, you know, let's, let's, I won't comment on that memo just yet because I'm, I'm sure that council would like to explain that memo to us. But so, Mr. Silverstein, if you, I don't know how you guys, you or the applicant wanted to talk, but, you know, I would assume you want to present that memo to us.
I would, Mr. Chair, thanks very much. For the record, Jonathan Silverstein with an office at nine Damon Mill Square for the applicant. As you indicated, I've relatively recently been retained by the applicant to help with this application. I've reviewed all of the correspondence from his prior council as well as from town council. And as you indicated, provided a supplemental memorandum with my analysis. I didn't, I tried not to retread ground that prior council had already addressed, but really tried to focus on the specific language of, of the bylaw and, and most importantly, looking at the use of the term "the dwelling", when that term is used in section six point two point four, which is the operative provision that is at issue here. And as I point out, throughout the bylaw, I focused on section four point two, but it's really throughout the bylaw, there's a distinction drawn between quote unquote "the dwelling", which refers to the primary building everywhere it's referenced, the single family dwelling, and a dwelling unit, including an additional dwelling unit. And in fact, in section four point two point two, there are twenty references to an accessory dwelling unit, not one to the ADU being in and of itself a dwelling. And what I find really important is, it specifically says that the ADU can be located in the dwelling or in an accessory structure. And I, I think that distinction really says it all when section six point two point four doesn't prohibit accessory structures from being in the front of a, of a narrow, you know, a reduced frontage lot. Only the singular dwelling, it prohibit, it permits a singular dwelling to be built on such a reduced frontage lot, but doesn't prohibit any other structure from being in the front of that lot. And for instance, a barn or a garage could lawfully be there. And under four point two point two, it is specifically contemplated that existing accessory structures could house an ADU and it simply doesn't make sense to interpret in a way that would prohibit a, an ADU from being located in such an existing accessory structure, particularly since town meeting clearly wanted to give this board the authority to allow that by giving you the authority to waive setback requirements. And let's face it, this is, it, it may be in the frontage section, but it's a setback provision because. because what it requires is that quote-unquote "the dwelling", the setback to the area where a reduced frontage lot has um, the accessible lot width. It's essentially a setback requirement, and Town Meeting clearly didn't contemplate that there would be this setback requirement um, under the frontage provision that applies to "the dwelling", where "the dwelling" is referred throughout the bylaw as the primary structure, not accessory structures that might house an ADU. So that's my argument in a nut- nutshell. Um, I think that the, to interpret it otherwise would not only be inconsistent with the language of the bylaw, the bylaws, you know, uses very specific language, but also the purpose of the bylaw, which is to provide flexibility in terms of where uh, ADUs are located on a lot um, by allowing for the waiver of setbacks. Um, I pointed out that the unique um, shape and topography and soil conditions of this lot relative to other lots in the district, um, I think would warrant variance, but I don't think we need to get to the variance um, issue because I think an interpretation of the bylaw in a common sense way would um, would support the reading that uh, planning staff first gave it and that um, that we're urging the board to take. So, I'll rest there. I'm sure the board might have questions, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Um, I'm just, you know, obviously have, have this section two point four in front of me, and it starts off with a dwelling in the residence, and so that, that's one. And that, and, and in that whole section, it also never talks about setbacks. Right? The word setback is not in there, um, which I think is, 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 is an important distinction. And I I, I wanna at this point in time, just leave it, leave it for that. I've got some more, uh, some other issues, uh, and points that I wanna discuss. I don't wanna uh, see, I wanna see what uh, my fellow board members um have as input here. Um, Ravi, Tom? I need, I need-
I respect the, uh, I, yeah, I respect the uh, opinion that the lawyer has given, that Mr. Silverstein's given. I think it's a very thoughtful, careful analysis. I just happen to disagree with it. Uh, number one, I don't happen to buy into his uh distinctions put on the dwelling. Secondly, and more importantly, uh, town council uh, has opined on this issue. And I think personally, I feel bound by the town council's opinion. And so for me, uh, notwithstanding the, what I thought was a very thoughtful written and oral presentation by the applicant's attorney, I still feel bound by the town council's opinion. So, I could not uh, vote in favor of locating the ADU where it's proposed by the applicant.
Thank, thanks, thanks, Tom. That's, that's pretty clear. Um, and I certainly don't disagree. Ravi, where are you?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think I've always said, there's, there's always an argument both ways, right? And I don't think you could have made the argument in favor of the applicant any better than Mr. Silverstein has in this memo. But for me, I'm sort of applying Occam's razor here. Uh, I don't necessarily feel bound by town council's opinion, but I, I think it's the simpler, more straightforward and correct uh, reading uh, for me here. Um, I agree with you, Thiel, you know, the reference to setbacks, we have the power to sort of wave reference to setbacks, but we're not talking about a setback when we're dealing with the frontage except for the lot. And I, I don't feel that I'm able to, to get that relief.
Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks, Ravi. So, um, sounds like uh, all uh, three of the members here are um on the same page. Uh, we can dive into this a bit further.
Mr. Kimbons?
But, sure, go ahead.
Michael Grasty here, and, and thank you, Jonathan, for your excellent analysis and presentation. I guess, if I, if I look at this question of setbacks, on the one hand, um, you know, this, you're saying that this is not a setback, and therefore the board doesn't have the, uh, the ability to grant relief um, under the, at the end of four point two point two, um, where it's permitted, the board is allowed to uh, deviate from the setback requirements. And yet, you're also what I have it that this dwelling must be, the ADU must be set back from this, the road to meet that hundred and fifty foot requirement. So in, in essence, if you're saying that it has to be set back that far by that rule, you therefore have the right to, the, the authority to grant a waiver um, or relief um, under four point two point two, the final paragraph.
No, we, we are, uh, you're right, Mr. Graskill, we have the ability to grant waivers uh, for setbacks. Our point here is that this is not a setback. This is a zoning regulation um, and not a setback. Um, and therefore we do not have uh, that relief, uh, that uh, that authority.
So it comes back to the same problem that we've had where the requirement is that the ADU meet the setback requirements for the parcel. And it's called out specifically setbacks. So, since this is not a setback, it's not a requirement in that paragraph.
We, we can um, grant relief for setbacks. If, if this were a setback, and you know, if we consider this a setback, then I doubt this board would grant relief of putting a whole structure in the setback. We will grant relief, you know, if it, if it's, if it's a, a four feet, uh, it's a few feet or so, you know, and if, and then there is still uh, some some backup that we would need and some reasoning that we would need um, for, for that to happen. But not the whole structure in a setback, if this were a setback. As I said, this is not a setback, this is a zoning requirement. Um, and which is, which is, which is different. So, I actually, um, Ravi and uh, Tom, just, uh, just to go, uh, just to get your opinions here. I would like to uh, close the public hearing here. Um, and wait uh, to vote on this uh, until um, our next uh scheduled meeting. And have town council uh, write uh, write the decision because I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit, uh, I'm, I'm not sure where to go with this, since this is a zoning requirement, and in my opinion. Because the um, the application is for nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet. Um, but we think the application is kind of uh, flawed to begin with because we can't have a uh, an ADU in that location, even if it were seven hundred and fifty square foot. So, I'd like to defer to town council to uh, to get a decision here. If that's okay with you all. Or, or you see a quicker, better path, Ravi, Tom?
No, I'm fine with that. Uh, I would also point out, on the assumption the applicant is still listening, that he may have one other problem. That the current town council's opinion is that if that building, whenever it is built, includes a basement that is not included in the nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet, that will be a problem.
Yep. Yep, yep, but that's step number two. Ravi?
Yeah, I'm fine with that as well.
Well, thank you. Then I'll close the uh, the public hearing on this. Uh,
You know, I, I guess maybe we can ask the applicant also, because I think there had been some concern previously about you know, being able to get this on the calendar quickly enough. Um, so is, is, is that what the applicant is okay with us doing, or would you prefer?
Yeah, well, well, the, the, the other option also that the applicant has is to uh, withdraw without prejudice, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, go, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, yeah, from a procedural standpoint, since this is a special permit, if the board closes the hearing tonight, you have ninety days to render your decision anyway. So, um, I do appreciate you asking us. Um, but it's not really up to us, and certainly the board has that authority. Um, you know, I did sort of mention, I think this is the rare case where a good argument could be made for a variance, and um, I'd like the opportunity to speak with my client about whether or not that's something they wanna pursue, um, given the restrictions and limitations of the site. What I'm hearing is that the board doesn't intend to vote tonight or to issue a decision between the next hearing, which would mean that we wouldn't face a repetitive petition issue. And so I think frankly, it would be our preference for the board not to vote tonight so that we have the opportunity to consider that as an option, if it's something um, we wanna pursue, and, and we'd be able to do that uh, in advance of the next meeting.
Okay, good, good. Um, yeah, variance is, is always an option, but yeah. Um, so, um, we'll just close the public hearing and then um, we'll, we'll vote potentially next uh, next hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Robinstutter?
Could I exa- could I ask exactly what is gonna be hap- what is gonna happen between this and the next meeting that is gonna change anything? Is it gonna be a new town council opinion, or?
No, he's gonna, he's gonna, no, he's gonna, he's gonna write the decision, um,
Two.
Of uh, of what uh, of pretty much what, what he already wrote in his memo. Um, and, 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 and just reword that, I would assume. So, that's, that's what's gonna happen.
Okay, because this is, this seems like it's just sort of stretching out the inevitable. I, I wanna know exactly what is gonna change between now and then. Town council's already made their opinion, right?
Right, but, but we still need to vote, and we need to vote on a decision, and that's what we will do, and, 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 um,
But, but vote on what, what new information?
A decision that the town council will write. Something that's gonna be filed with uh, with the town clerk, and then-
The decision to kind of go into more detail on the basis for what are, what we voted on, right? So,
Right, right, right.
It's a or nay, it's-
Right, right. Right, and, 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 and- And then, and I don't think we're dragging this out. We just affording the applicant uh, the courtesy to to bring new information forward. But, you know, when we close a public hearing tonight, uh, he will not be able to close, uh, to bring anything forward anymore. But, you know, we're not definitely stretching it out, but, you know, we just wanna make a, a in- informed decision, and you know, we owe that to every applicant to uh-
Thank you, thank you.
Think this through. So, um, that said, um, we will close the public hearing. Uh, portion of this, and then we'll continue uh, until, um, uh, when will we be continuing to, Kim, can you let us know?
Thank you.
Yes, so the next meeting will be July eleventh. And the open time slot is seven fifteen.
Okay.
Right, I, I move that we continue the application of Irene Maldonova for a special permit under zoning by law sections four, two, two, and eleven, six for a nine hundred and ninety-nine square foot detached additional dwelling at two hundred and sixty-two Virginia Road until uh, July eleventh at seven fifteen.
Thank you, Tom?
Uh, agreed.
Second, right? Um, everybody in favor, Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Mr. Swaim?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. So we'll see you, uh, if you wish to attend uh, for our decision and vote on uh, on the eleventh of July.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda, Matthew and Gail Burr for a special permit on the zoning by law sections four, two, 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 and eleven, six for a one thousand square foot detached additional dwelling units with a waiver to allow the ADU to be located thirty-three point three feet from the front property line instead of the required forty feet at two eighty-seven Lindsay Pond Road. Um, anybody here to speak for the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, me again, Jonathan Silverstein.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so as the board may recall, at the last hearing session, the applicant uh, read the tea leaves, um, which were difficult to make out, and um, asked for more time to come back to the board uh, with a revised floor plan in detail, um, showing that the uh, living space that had been proposed in the basement of the detached ADU was going to be um, eliminated and that the basement would be converted to uh, just storage and equipment. The uh, revised plans that have been submitted show that the um, ceiling height not not with uh, any uh, gimmicks, uh, that the ceiling height is clearly going to be uh, under six feet, eight inches, uh, pulling it out of the definition of of gross floor area. Uh, in addition, as we also discussed, we've presented a new plan uh, with a request for a waiver, um, basically just uh, shifting the orientation and position of the detached ADU um, at the request of the NRC. So that the existing, the pre-existing um, encroachment on the buffer zone to the pond on the property would be further reduced from what we had already um, proposed. And uh, the only way to do that, to accomplish that, would be to push the detached ADU slightly into the front yard setback. Uh, we've submitted new um, support letters from neighbors of the property. Um, and we uh, believe that the encroachment is, is fairly modest and is gonna be screened by the existing berm, uh, the landscape berm, which is existing and, and pro- uh, proposed landscaping. And um, with that, unless the board has any questions on that sort of overview of where we stand, I would turn it over to Bruce Ringwall, who could walk the board through the new plans, if that would be helpful.
Um, thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Silverstein. Um, I'd like to see the site plan. Um, Bruce, if you can, uh, if you can pull that up, I think.
So, first is the, good evening, Bruce Ringwall from GPR. Uh, first is the revised plan, and I think you can see here that uh, from the basement to the structural um, members holding up the, the first floor were under six, eight. And that was, you know, there's nothing in the basement, just unfinished space and just the first floor level um, at the nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet. Um, I need to stop sharing to share again with a different page. Excuse me one moment. Harder to do with just one screen. Makes it easier when I'm at the office. Um, is it now changed to the site plan?
Yeah, but I think that rendered site plan that the uh- I think was a bit, well, to me that was, I mean, this is actually, this is actually pretty good. From, you know, where, where you're sitting, but you.
Yeah, so here we have the wetland line. A previous building was down here at thirty foot offset. And our previous design had the, the main building at a thirty foot offset as well. We shifted forward five feet, which has actually shifted the building here a little bit more than that. And it's because of the overhang here on the corner that we're at thirty three and a third feet to the setback. It's the way the overhang is angled. It's actually, the building is another two feet back from that. But your zoning is to the overhang. This area right here is a earth and berm, which I will stop sharing and switch to the nice rendered plan. And bring that up.
Yep.
So here, this is, actually, we didn't go through and have the landscape architect do it over again, but the, this, these two buildings would shift on this access, basically, sliding forward so that this corner would stick in just a little bit more. But actually, it's over here a little bit. As it happens, there'd be a little retaining wall and we would be, there's several very, very tall white pines up here that we would take down and then replace with spruce trees and other plantings and then low growing plants as well to revegetate this berm, which has got a lot of invasives on it and those large pine trees. So we would, it'd be much prettier, nicer landscape in the long run. But again, because of the, the wetlands and the setbacks, we're requesting to push in. We do have a two point six acre lot, but we're kind of crammed into the corner.
Thank, uh, thank you. Thanks for that explanation. Do we have any, so by the way, is this the plan that natural resources is going to be approving or? Is there still?
If, if you folks agree to approve this evening, we will prepare the plan for natural resource to shift this up forward. I didn't go through the full grading exercise and revise the drainage until we got word that you were willing to move forward.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Ravi, Tom, questions?
I'm comfortable personally.
Yeah. You know, I think the change in the basement takes care of that issue. And in terms of the setback relief, I think certainly there's, it can be done without detriment to the neighborhood and the benefit to the wetland area. So. I'm good with this.
Good, good. Yeah, I, I don't think whether we ever informed ADU. I, I mean, I can't remember, but then again, my memory isn't all that good, but whether we ever gave relief for a
There was one.
Setback and then.
Yeah, I think there was one on Lexington Road or somewhere abouts. And there was already a structure like right on the road and then there was a unit in there.
And, yeah, and I agree with you both, with you both. It's just that I want to be very careful here.
You know, we've got the berm and I think we've got the wetlands here and.
We got, yeah, yeah. So that, well, let me first, before we go there, let me open it up to the public, if anybody in the public would like to comment on this. As was noted, we have three new letters for the revised plan in, three new letters in support. So. I think that's important, but not seeing anybody raising their hand, I will close the public comment section. And indeed bring it back to the board, this discussion, and we started already. I also have no issue with this. And I think, you know, detriment to the neighborhood, you know, we have three letters of support in, you know, we have an existing berm, which I think is, is very important. And also I think there was a spatial relationship, the way there's, there's a relationship between the house, the main, the main dwelling and the ADU, and there was a courtyard in between and sort of like, I think somebody thought about a nice site plan. And so they, they made a relationship between those two, between these two buildings. So if you, one, if the main building has to shift, then the ADU has to shift. And, and so that's where indeed I think the, the wetlands come in and, and, and natural resources. So where, where we push, you know, push them back. So I think, I think there's, there's three really good issues why, or reasons why we should grant this, this relief. So. That said, if there's nobody else wanting to discuss, then I again, I'm looking at you, Ravi, since you're the eloquent one here.
So I can have my screen up. Yeah. I move that we approve the application of Matthew and Gail Burr for a special permit under zoning by law sections forty two two and eleven six for a thousand square foot detached ADU with a waiver to allow the ADU to be located thirty three point three feet from the front property line instead of the required forty feet at two hundred and eighty seven Lindsay Pond Road. With standard conditions and, you know, based on the findings discussed today.
Findings discussed, so that's berm, spatial relationship, wetlands, neighborhood letters from the neighbor, neighbors that they're in agreement with it. So I think that's, that's all important. So.
And how about in the base? Would you add something? The basement should only be used for mechanical type equipment and not for living unit?
I'm not sure whether we can say that we, I think we can only say, you know, it's square footage. They can do whatever they want in their, right?
Well, no, 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 no. Remember, we had that big issue and the town council opined on it. My understanding is as follows. When somebody made the application, not only this couple, which we happen to agree, what they've done is great. Concern was that have people been including in the nine hundred and ninety nine square feet? The space in a basement? We've interpreted the zoning code to say, no, you can't include, excuse me, you must include in the nine hundred and ninety nine square feet, you must include the area of the basement. And town council has backed us up on that. Meaning that my understanding is that one could not include a basement that exceeded, therefore gross fair gross or feet exceeded nine ninety nine, if the basement is going to be used for living space. And my understanding is, though I would have to be corrected by a town planner and/or Kim, but I believe there may be a addition to the next town meeting, either special town meeting or the next spring, to clarify whether or not basements need to be included or not included in allocation of ADU square footage. That's why I raised it, because I don't want, I don't want to walk into the trap of approving, because in this case, they've, to their credit, they've said it will only be for mechanical type use and the ceiling will be, I think, six, seven.
Yeah. Yeah. By building.
I just want to get that clarified.
By building quota needs to be six eight for living space, at least six eight. So at six seven, we wouldn't permit living space anyway down there. Wouldn't be horrible.
Agreed.
So, Mr. Silverstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to that point, the, the issue that town council opined on was whether basement space were counts towards gross square footage regardless of ceiling height. And town council determined it did, and I lost that battle. And I'm a gracious loser. That being said, the definition of gross square footage in your bylaw in section one point three point twelve is specific that basements do not count if they have a ceiling height of less than six point, six feet eight inches. So it doesn't say anything about how that basement is used. That being said, Mr. Creed is absolutely correct. The building code wouldn't allow this to be used as building space. But I would, I'd ask that there not be a condition that prohibits use of the basement as living space. Because just for instance, if town meeting someday decides to exclude basements from the square footage requirement for ADUs, then my clients would have the option of maybe digging out the basement, increasing the ceiling height and using it for living space. So I would just ask that there not be a condition, the bylaw says what it says, we've reduced it to less than six eight. And we'd ask that it be left at that.
Okay, I, 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 I agree. I mean, I'm sitting in a space here that has some ceiling heights here is less than six eight, so they're not counted either. Well, it's still living space. Living space or usable space. So. I, I would also, since it's already precluded by the building code, I, I would, yeah, I wouldn't. I wouldn't want to include that condition. Are you okay with that, Tom?
I defer to you, the Honorable Chairman and the Building Chairman. I, I defer. I accept your.
I, I defer to Paul Queen. He's, he's much smarter than I am.
On the six eight rule as well. It's already built in here.
Excellent. So we opened, we actually had a public comment, right? So yeah, it's, we're looking at Ravi. That was.
My motion, my motion is, my motion has been discussed and is awaiting a second from, from Tom.
And I'm second to your motion. I second your motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Ms. Fia?
Hi.
Mr. Swaim?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. So thank you. Looks like a, a great site plan. So good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And that's the last you'll see me tonight.
Tonight, tonight. You, you don't want to opine on our meeting minutes that we still have?
I haven't read them. Thank you all.
Have a good day.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, that's it. Administrative items. It's our last item for tonight. Meeting minutes, December fourteenth, twenty twenty three. I read them. And as far as I could remember, I did not have any comments. Ravi, Tom?
Yep, I'm good with.
Sorry, say that again?
I did read them and I have no comments.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, I move that we approve the December fourteenth, twenty twenty three meeting minutes.
Tom?
Agreed.
Tom seconds. So all the favor, Ms. Fia?
Hi.
Mr. Swaim?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. So meeting minutes approved. Cool, that was it. So we did this just over an hour. It's a little bit of a late start. So that's good meeting.
And just, just so I'm clear with her, we don't have anything else between now and the July eleventh meeting. There's nothing on Forest Ridge in between.
No, I was just looking at what's, what's already on the town website. Here, let me, is there anything? But as far as now we have a, a big, no, we don't have, and nothing is, is set up yet on the town meeting. Rumor has it that they were going to file for the variance. So once that will come, I'm sure they then want to wait. Who knows? But they want to wait till whether they have the variance secured or not. But in to keep things moving, I think it would be then still appropriate to have another working session. So that will be Tom and I meeting with them again. And then, you know, of, of course, the, our peer reviewers and all and town staff.